All right, everyone. The time now is 5:31 and the date is June 8. This is a pity of the whole meeting to hear from some of the departments of the city as it relates to their budget. Of course, as it relates to the upcoming vote of the full council. Pass the budget on the week. So I want to thank you all for joining this evening. Asked just in regards to a little housekeeping. Folks on the call, if you're not speaking, I would just ask that you please meet yourself as others do. And being said, we can go ahead and get started. And from the top, the first item we have is the mayor's budget. So I will turn it over to Tom Ash and his crew at this time.
Thank you, Council President Williams. Thank you for this opportunity and thank you to TJ and Lindsay for all their work. And their staff going into this and to the rest of the council members who are here today. We'll get to our budget, which will be quick. Our fiscal 2022 recommended general fund budget would be $690,203. That is an additional $32,194 from last year's budget was four percent increase. Our personal services are the same amount of employees, eight point, their eighth general fund FTEs. The increase is attributed to essential supplies and services necessary for the city governance to ensure the needs of constituents are met in both timely and quality fashion. Res funding for contractual for annual copy release along with a subscription to State House News Service to provide most up to date information about the activities of the state government year round. Also for continuing funding for diversity efforts being undertaken by Chief Diversity and Posing Office Julia Jake includes recruitment and some advertising that she is doing. And I would add to that, just on a, from a mayor's standpoint on a personal level, mayor, by the way, is at a high school graduation tonight. That since the beginning of the pandemic, that the mayor really set the tone for, for his staff and for city government period. And he didn't miss a beat, was here every single day and staff was too. And then he knew that that was important to, to send that message to the residents of the city. That, that government will carry on and will carry on very well as it did. And so I just wanted to add that as a kind of a side to, to this event. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Council President. Do you have any questions?
All right. Thank you, Tom. At this time, I'll take any questions or comments from the council. Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. And thanks, Tom, for the, for, and to all of mayor staff for a great job on COVID and a challenging year. Thanks for, for all the work you did. And that goes for all of City Hall, not just you guys, but it's, leadership was excellent. So is there anything, the one thing that stuck out here to me that I never heard of before is the State House News Service. Is that something you get online? Is that something every day that comes in or is that available to more than just the mayor's office?
TJ will take that. Yeah, so there's three accounts that are associated with any account with the State House News Service. And what that does is summarizes all the actions at the state level, all the hearings, all the formal and informal Senate sessions, all the agency actions and all get summarized probably in this series of 10 to 15 emails a day, if not more, to make sure that we're informed of everything that happens on the state level. There's legislation that's moving. We get notified of it through the State House News Service. So it's something that we had probably 10 years ago that we thought, given during COVID, that it'd be nice to be able to get the updates. And it's something we want to carry forward, go forward.
So, so my questions are TJ, is it benefit, I'm assuming it's beneficial, but is it available to other departments or is it just available to the mayor's office?
It's available to, right now, the three people that have it are me, Eddie Pacooper as the city solicitor and Billy Baker in the mayor's office that have direct access to it. When you look into if there's, if there's others, I think there's a fee, a $150 fee for any additional account that is set up through them. But it is, right now, the three that we paid for, for the $3,000, or 3,200 bucks, is that. It is, it is worth its value because we, we are notified instantaneously of anything that happens at the state level. And so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any other questions at this time from the council? Counselor Walsh.
Muted.
Counselor Walsh, are muted?
I'm still tired from last night. That's why I'm muted. I have just a general question. It's more like, you know, like an overview and it's directed to you, TJ. What do you think are the major concerns of, of this year's budget or what are the highlights?
So the major concerns as always is just making sure that we're staying on top of our pension fund, funding our non discretionary accounts. You know, so those are the ones that you kind of, you know, have our growth grow beyond what we typically like to do. One of the highlights of it really comes in is the American Rescue Plan allows us to backfill lost revenue through a calculation formula that the that allowed us to continue with the many worthwhile investments, making sure that our employees get adequate pay raises, that core services are maintained. And that amount wastes $12.2 million. And so that's probably one of the bigger highlights is that's $12 million we have to spend that we would have otherwise had to have cut out of the budget.
Right. Are there any deficits that concern you?
No, at this point, we have a deficit account of about $9 million or so, but we have grants that we can put them off on to. We're just awaiting FEMA's response to our initial application. And whatever they deny, CARES money and rescue plan money will pick up.
Okay. And regarding the employees, there, no employees were laid off. There's probably natural attrition, but.
Correct. No employees were laid off. We budgeted for virtually all vacancies. We created a couple of new positions across the city and we included a 2% pay raise that for employees that didn't get a raise last year and another 2% for FY22. So we're trying to make sure that our employees weren't adversely impacted. You may recall when we did the FY21 budget, we didn't know if we could give raises, so not a lot of raises, but this year we're trying to make that right.
Right. And, and just, I just had one question. It was on your expense overview page. I was looking at the increases in city departments. And the one that stuck out to me was, I believe it was the increase in the police, public safety division. What do you, what was that attributed to, I believe it was?
And so the biggest increase in public safety was we had to take eight firefighters off of a grant and then put them on the general fund. I can tell you that breakdown, but that's where, right now, the, the police department's budget is a level service budget. But it didn't include any major increases for the police department as we await the DOJ final negotiation with the administration. And so the really big increase would be the fire departments, eight firefighters coming off a fire grant onto the city's general fund.
Okay, and one last question after my questions, but we heard a lot last night about free cash. Has all that free cash been allocated or can, can suggestions be made for use?
So FY21's free cash needs to be moved to the, moved to a stabilization reserve fund or otherwise carried forward. To the FY20's free cash is what we have in front of us. They spent a little on yesterday for the OPEB trust. So we need to move the remaining of whatever's left of that $7 million to stabilization reserves that on Monday. And FY22, 21's free cash, we anticipate to be at least 13 to 15 million, hopefully a little bit higher. Will not be available for recommended, recommended spending until November, December.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon to you, Juanito. Good afternoon, TJ. TJ, quick question regarding the, the budget itself, the ARP, was that taken into consideration?
Lost revenue of the American Rescue Plan was taken into consideration of the 212.2 million. That's all the money we've used for loss revenue component of that law.
Okay. And now just a quick question. This might be even more details on the actual, when the police comes. But I see here the page two, there's going to be a seven miles. It's gonna be totals, yeah, total of the seven miles for shot spotters. Will you be able to tell me how many miles are going to be coming into Forest Park?
Counselor Davila, this is on the mayor's budget. I just want to.
Okay, that's, that's what I say. I can hold up the specific question to when they come. So, but I didn't get what, I can hold my question to them. That's fine.
Appreciate it, Counselor. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Ramos.
Just very quickly, Mr. President, on, on the line of questioning that Counsel Walsh was, was on TJ, when, when did we lift the hiring freeze, the temporary hiring freeze?
We actually had a slow thaw as things were looking better and better and we didn't really lift it. We still examine every position, but we, as attrition happens, we would evaluate the need in, in the department and across the organization. And the department would make a, make a case for each position as they became available.
No, that's fine. I, I just want to make sure that it was actually lifted.
Yeah, so technically I guess it's lifted. We just never really announced that it's lifted. We just started posting positions as the departments made a case to backfill.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Are there any other questions or comments from the council at this time? Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, we can proceed with the second department, which is of course the city council. And before I torch, I just have an announcement for the council body and recognition of what they've actually done for me. And I will say in my nine to five throughout my, my, my tenure in the nonprofit sector. And also realizing that this has been a request for quite some time, I'm just happy to announce that there will be a $500 allotment for each counselor for professional development. That is not included in this budget, but will be in the final budget. So, and there will be a recommended list of seminars, webinars that counselors can take to increase things such as emotional intelligence, you know, project management, things of that nature, with some of the things that we have to deal with on a day to day basis. So I just wanted to, to give that, that shout out first. And I will turn it over at this time to, who is speaking on behalf of the council?
Gladys Ken, but I gladly step in and do it because Gladys was just voted yesterday. Congratulations. But I'm glad we covered it a few, if you'd like me to, Mr. President.
Okay, Gladys, feel free.
So, counselors, I, I have had a chance to look at the city council budget and that was one of the things that I, I was happy to hear that might be in the works was the professional development piece for the counselors. So I'm glad that, that is something that we're moving forward with this year. The actual details of the staffing, we have one vacancy. And we're looking to fill that this year, hopefully within the next month. As TJ just mentioned, today's my first day. So I'm trying to hit the ground running, but, but cautiously. And I did reach out to Lindsay earlier, but right before the meeting to see if that she can help present the city clerk's budget because I didn't get a chance to prepare that one. I have seen it. I have the details of it, but I'd like her to speak more over to the, any shortfalls that we have this year based on the revenue because the office was closed for some of 2020 due to COVID. And maybe speak to what the expectations are going to be moving forward in 2021.
Oh, Mr. President, awesome. I can speak to that one. So the clerk's office is funded at 11 FTEs consistent with the last few fiscal years. There are no reductions in their budget. There was actually increase of 3.9%. And their personal services is 3.2% and their OTPS. Lost revenue is not anything we've held any department head accountable for, for during COVID because we know the building was shut down and there wasn't much any of the department has been due to generate and they might otherwise have generated. All that lost revenue has been factored into the loss revenue calculation to the American Recovery Plan. But not, there should be no issues with the city clerk's budget going forward. The line items we tend to monitor are the advertising line items for open meetings. And if there's any needs for the city clerk or city council, we can, we'll bring it for the council for supplemental appropriation.
All right. Thank you, TJ. If that is all, I will now entertain questions or comments from the council. Counselor Ramos.
Just a huge thank you from me, Mr. President, to you and to the mayor on the professional development piece. That's something that we've been advocating for, for over a decade or at least a decade. And I'm glad that it's finally happened. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to echo, thank you for the professional development funds that will be added to the budget. But I also wanted to thank Gladys for jumping in. That's why you were selected as the best candidate for the job because you jump in and you, you do your best. You always do your due diligence and, and I think that, that that's fantastic. I did want to ask a question. There's a position in the clerk's office and I can't remember the name of the lady, but I remember working with her. It's one person that does this role. I think it's like pulls the record requests or she does something in the office and it's just one African American lady older. I can't remember the name of the role, but I know it's one. So I want you to look into that because if she goes on vacation or things like that, I don't know who steps in and take over that role. I asked the Sheena for the name of the role.
I think you're talking about the public records coordinator. You're talking about Andrea Stone?
Yes, Andrea, yes.
She's, as a matter of fact, she's actually retiring at the end of June.
Oh, okay.
So that's something that we're, you know, talking about and looking into because we have to post that position, hire for that position, train. Because she is, she's a vital part of the, the public records piece to the city clerks slash law department.
And so is there someone who can do that job while she's not available?
Her backup right now that's, that has been trained and has been working here physically in the office of the city clerk is Monique Davis. And so she's working in conjunction with the law department. There's someone, there's an attorney, Attorney Steve Roach, that is working on that public records piece because it is a huge, it's, you know, it's a monster. Right? So there, it's the, the piece that is associated with the police department. So if you think of body worn cams, all that stuff, Steve Roach is the one who's doing that. He works here with Monique and Andrea and they meet monthly. Kathy Breck is also in on those meetings. So it, it's kind of a group effort to take care of the public records.
Oh, it's a group effort. Okay. Cause um, I know from like previous years on that, you know, it was communicated to me that there's no real backup for Andrea when she's out or sick or, or things like that. So I'm glad to know that Monique is now trained to assist with that and that you'll be replacing that position.
Yes.
But hopefully we can get another position in the budget one day. We can talk to finance about that offline. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Two things. Good job on the professional development all the way around. That's great news. And just to make sure the one opening, I assume that's the third aide in the office. Is that the money for that is in the budget as it stands?
That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Walsh.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I actually have the same question, question as Counselor Allen about the position in the office and with the vacancy that was created when the council aide moved to the mayor's office, if that position was going to be filled.
Thank you, Counselor. Please, please, yes.
So the answer is yes?
Yes, yes, it will be.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have more of a, more of a slash advocating. I think here for the clerk's office, I, I think that one, it's not necessarily in the budget, but I, they need more space. Those, those people are cramming there. They need more space. I don't know if we can do that reshuffle thing, but they need more space in there. Thank you, Mr. President.
So we have a robust scanning program going on across the city and in the clerk's department. So we're looking to try to free up space where we have a lot of storage. So that has been something we've been doing the last three years. And I believe Gladys will be inheriting a grant to scan a vast number of documents down in the vaults and stuff. So we'll be hopefully freeing up space that way.
Good to hear. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions or comments from the council at this time for the city council budget? All right. Seeing none, I will move on to the city clerk.
Mr. President, we, Gladys and I covered both of those in the same conversation. I apologize.
Yeah, no, no worries. Well, I will still put the question out there for counselors. Any other questions on, on the clerk budget? Do pose them at this time. Counselor Whitfield?
Sorry, my whole comment about Andrea was for the clerk. I was confused of where we were. So I just wanted to say that, TJ.
All right. Well, seeing questions for either the city council or city clerk, we can move, move to the board of elections. Commissioner Ayala.
So the budget for the board of elections has seen a minimal increase as we do every local election year. So FY 2022 is going to be a local election year and we budgeted for a primary and a general election. As you all know, there will be no primary this election and conversations have been had to hopefully put the funds that were set aside for that primary election for training and other purposes because we're going to have, hopefully, fingers crossed, I see Theo in on this new voting equipment. So he's working hard on doing an RFP to have new voting equipment this year. And the rollout in that will be training for staff, training for all of our coworkers and training for the election day staff that's responsible for troubleshooting the machines. So that's part of hopefully what the cost savings will help us roll out as well as some costs that we have in the budget associated with COVID. I don't know how that's going to look going forward now that we're kind of loosening up some of the requirements that we have. In the last election, we really had to spend money that we didn't expect. Thankfully, it was covered by grants for actually sanitizing polling places, some places which are located in senior housing. And our cost increased based on the fact that we had to spend money for COVID related costs on election day and for the primary last year. Going forward into this local election, I know that some of the counselors have approached me about possibly doing a more aggressive vote by mail campaign. Similar to what the Secretary of State's office was able to roll out last year. At the beginning of this budget process, we didn't have the money, but because there is no primary, that might be something that we can, with our finance team, look into. And aside from that, the other additional cost for our budget, the way it spikes in a local election year is due to the printing of the ballots. So we have to print our own ballots. So those are some of the changes you see. We do have one vacancy that we still have to fill. So that's something that we're going to be working on this month as well. So that, that's going to be going up on the website and that's for an election specialist position.
Thank you, Commissioner. I see we have hands up in the queue. I'll start with Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Turk, is there a, is there, are there, is there any additional funding in the budget for the ordinance, the requirements under the ordinance that the city council passed for informing the public of an upcoming election? I believe the, the cost associated with it was like around $13,000 for, for the mailing part of it. Is there anything in the budget for that this year?
Once we realized that there was going to be no primary, that's a conversation that I actually very briefly had with Counselor Letterman as to maybe that we'd have some wiggle room to use that in the mailing piece. What we have started doing already in an effort to kind of fulfill that part of the ordinance is anytime someone registers to vote now or changes their address or changes a party, we have a large, larger postage budget at this point because we have to mail something every single day. So we're mailing out hundreds of pieces of mail a day. We've just internally created a document that goes in there that's telling people what election dates we have, dead dates and deadlines. So we're trying to be creative with how we notify the public and fulfill that ordinance so that it's not a one time mailing. So we're catching some voters and we're hoping that maybe with the wiggle room that we're going to have with the no primary, we can somehow fulfill that other piece and do like a mass postcard mailing of some sort and look toward bulk mail so that it's a, the cost of postage itself is cheaper.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Letterman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate Counselor Ramos bringing up the municipal election notification ordinance that this body passed unanimously in, in 2017. So, you know, I, I have the same question, but I think that we need to arrive at, at a more concrete answer in collaboration with our clerk and the finance department. So the municipal election notification ordinance is the law of the city of Springfield. It's intended to make sure that every household with voters in, in the city of Springfield is, is adequately notified of the election, which is something the city council thinks is very important in municipal years. And it has a very concrete timeline on when it needs to be done in terms of the goals of, of reaching the ordinance's goals. I know and really appreciate that we were able to reach the signage goals of the election in the last round of municipal elections. And so given that the, the cost is, was estimated two years ago to be around 13,000, I think it, it'll probably be a little bit more this year with postage and printing increases. But I think that, that we should get together. We have plenty of time with there being no primary. I believe the ordinance calls for it to be going out 30 days before the election. So given that, you know, the lack of a, a primary will save, you know, somewhere around over $200,000, if I remember correctly, we should be able to, to get this funded this year, but we also need to make sure that we're funding it in future years where there's less wiggle room because it is, it is a priority the city council has identified. The last thing I'll say on it is, I think that, you know, one positive piece of it is that it, it sets minimum criteria for the mailing. And so if we do decide to go further and try to implement some sort of vote by mail or, or increased opportunity for vote by mail, that could be done one in the same with, and still keeping in line with the ordinances requirements. And I think we definitely need to look at that. I mean, there, there's no ignoring the level of engagement that we saw through vote by mail in the last round of state elections. And I think it's just further evidence that if we really give people the information and resources or tools to cast their ballots, they will. So I think we need to be committed to that for our local democracy.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, talking about elections makes me think about coworkers and congratulations Gladys for your new role. I'm sure you'll do as great of a job there as you have in the elections. Has their salary gone up? Are there any plans to increase the pay for the coworkers?
We're actually doing a pay study now. There were some increases that we're seeing across the state. We have not, as a city, increased coworkers' pay, I would say probably in the last four election cycles. And we're on par with some cities our size, but due to attrition, we are losing a certain age group of coworkers and it's harder to attract a younger coworker, let's say, that may be working and taking a day off of work to come in and volunteer their time. So right now, my staff is conducting a pay study to see what other cities and towns of commensurate size are paying their, their coworkers.
So following that. So following that, because it's an older group that sometimes are the coworkers, have you are you in this situation where we won't have enough, or you're going to have to recruit in other ways?
No, we actually, we did get a great group from last election. So the Secretary of State's office was really concerned that we weren't going to have as many coworkers as we needed for the big presidential election. And so with the big recruitment drive that they did on a state level, we were able to get and capture and keep a good size of coworkers that are new. So they were new last election, and they really worked the hardest election any coworker can, you know, in November presidential election. And many of them have decided to stay for this round as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Woodfield? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think Counselor Allen.
Yeah, Counselor Allen and Counselor Woodfield. I apologize.
My question is simply, is the money, how much are the new voting machines, you know, approximately? And is the money in the budget?
But we have the money set aside in the Pay Go Capital account, and we're waiting for the bid to come back. But we've set aside $150,000 for the new election machines.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Woodfield?
Thank you. So my question is more around Gladys's promotion. And there was mentioned that there may be a position for a deputy commissioner for the Elections Department. And I wanted to know if that was discussed by Bill TJ, Tom, the mayor, in the event that Gladys was selected for the position?
I did. I was called into the mayor's office to have a conversation. Unfortunately, I wasn't available to meet with Gladys first thing this morning. But when I came in the office this afternoon, we had a detailed conversation of that exact issue of needing a backup and a potential deputy in the Elections Office. And it's something that we're going to look at. And I believe with the budget and everything else, there should be sufficient savings to do that.
In the current budget?
Correct. The current budget as presented to the city council should be absorbed, the increase in compensation and the additional position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woodfield. Counselor Dabula?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to go back for a second to Commissioner Ayola. Please forgive me, Gladys. Felicidades. Congratulations on your appointment. I'm sure you're going to do an excellent job on part of you. The I just want to make sure that increase on the expense side of 29,000, that's for the printing ballots, you say?
Correct.
Okay, because of we're no longer getting the state portion of it.
Yeah, so the state only prints ballots on state election years. So during a local election, we have to pay for the printing.
Okay. Now, Commissioner, the election special, as you mentioned, is that going to be what's that? Is it going to be part-time, full-time, temporary?
That's actually a full-time vacancy that we're back filling. So that's something that was already in the budget.
So it's within those five?
Correct.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Gladys, you mentioned the pay study. I have a broader question. TJ, what, how do we generally commission? Because, you know, we confirmed Commissioner Ayola last night, there was a lot of discussion amongst the city council, making sure she's fairly compensated for taking on additional responsibilities. I trust that she's sorted that out. And, you know, there's also discussion about pay scales for deputy election commissioners and the like. And what is our city policy for all departments for how we approach that? Is it department by department?
The funny thing you asked is that one of the few things that did not make it into the budget is a salary study across all on bragging positions. Bill did request it, as we did, what, 10 years ago? I think was the last one we did. We did a salary study about 10 years ago.
I remember.
Soon to the salary study, we hit the recession, and we couldn't live up to what salary expectations were across all the positions. So we struggled with it. And we've been doing it internally through the HR department as as positions come up. We haven't done a full-fledged salary study.
I lost you on that last that last.
And we did not the FY2 budget, FY2 budget request. We wanted to recover from COVID that if the numbers come back large, that we were able to fulfill it this time, because the biggest gripe we got is once we did the salary study and never funded it, it really upset our employees.
All right. Well, it would seem to me, Mr. President, that we, as a council overseeing a 600-plus million-dollar budget, have a responsibility to continue to check in on this. And I think the salaries that we control directly are are very limited, as we learned from the conversation with the city clerk last night. So our responsibility is really limited to school committee, mayor, and council. And I think that as we continue to study these other pay adjustments, we should be cognizant, not just of the budget responsibility we have, but also our own budgetary responsibility to those positions. And I think it's time that we study all those things. And and I think that some of the recent discussions have brought that to light. That's all. Thank you.
Really noted. Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Are there any other questions for the Board of Elections at this time? Seeing none, we'll continue with OMB, also known as Finance.
Thank you, Council. So the OMP budget is recommended for fiscal '22 at 1.1 million, 1.1 million, 47,518. That is an increase of 162,000. We actually increased the personal services by one employee. We did a slight reorg. When Tim Brown left us as Budget Director, we elevated Melanie Akobi to be the Budget Director. She still maintained a lot of the grant functions that she was doing as Grants Director. And then we took over the grants management and administration of the Police Department essentially at City Hall to give and get a hand to the Police Department to get the grants organized and being spent strategically. And we also are adding in the process of trying to add two grant positions to help us track and report on the rescue plan funding that we're getting, the reporting that's going to be tracking important is going to be robust, at least quarterly. And then there's possibly more annual, larger annual reports. So those are the big changes for the ANF or OMB budget. I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, TJ. Are there any other questions at this time from the council? Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, TJ, thanks for the explanation. Just wondering, as you go into the year, as we sit here today, do you have, besides this one budget analyst position that you're adding, is that the only open rec in your in the OMB?
So there's two grant FTEs that we posted for. Unfortunately, we got only four applicants for the two positions, three of which were not qualified, one of which was that we'll be bringing in for an interview. We are having a tough time filling our analyst positions. We just filled two. Two of them are actually on the call right now. We're thrilled to have Alyssa Talia here. But we definitely are having struggle finding her. But there's two open positions as we speak.
Too open. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dabula?
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, those two grant FTEs, do we know how long we expect them to last?
Long as the money for the American Rescue Plan money lasts, which is through December 2024, and then beyond that, probably 2026.
Okay. And I'm sure at that time, when I make a decision if we're going to keep them or?
Correct. Hopefully, by that time, they'll be one dormant in the general fund. But we have plenty of work for the next five, six years.
Excellent. Good. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Counselor Dabula. Counselor Woodfield?
TJ, for clarification, the two FTEs for the grant positions are currently going to be paid out of the American Rescue Plan Act funds?
Yeah, so, well, I think it's too technical, but for the first part of their job, we'll probably pay them out of CARES money. And then, once the CARES money is no longer available, come the end of December, switch them over to the Rescue Plan money.
Okay, so they're grant-funded, what kind of grant-funded? Fully grant-funded. Okay, thank you. And the other one FTE is general funds that you're adding?
Yes, it's actually kind of a switch from the way it all went down, the net effect is a switch from the Police Department to our department. We took over their grant management position into our department under a senior analyst to help manage all the Police Department grants.
Vacant position currently?
Excuse me?
Is that a vacant position or filled position?
It's filled now. And the president started full-time with us kind of about a month ago.
A month ago?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woodfield. Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will proceed to 311.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Williams. This is Roy Goodman speaking. Hopefully you can hear me?
Yes, we can, Roy.
Yes.
Okay. Our budget is pretty straightforward. We have a slight increase this year for fiscal year '22, recommended for 461,242 dollars. The majority of our budget is for salary and wages. We're budgeted for nine full-time employees. We currently have eight, and we're in a process of hiring one person in the next couple of weeks. We've already, the provision has already been posted on the website, and I've already completed the interviews. So now it's just a matter of selecting a candidate from there. The rest of the budget is just day-to-day operations for rental office equipment, our software, and just office supplies. For fiscal year '21, it was very challenging for our department, just like in the other department, due to the COVID. But we were open throughout the throughout the times since last March. All of our offices was open. We did not work from home. We came in the office every day. So far this fiscal year, we have about have taken about 150,000 calls. We received our two mayor's calls since 2009 at the end of April. So our citizens are using our services, and we'll continue to do our best. We're not a perfect operation, but we do what we can as we try to assist all these different departments through City Hall and all the municipal buildings. So that's where we are at this present time. I'm not sure if you have any questions for me at all.
Roy, Counselor Woodfield, I'll start with you.
First, Roy, I wanted to say, just Counselor Woodfield, I wanted to say thank you for your service, being essential workers in your department. We definitely appreciate you going in during those tough times and your team, and, you know, handling constituent requests. So my question to you is, do you think that you're adequately staffed to handle the call volume that's coming in?
I think right now we should be all set. We'll be get our nice full-time employee. However, one more employee may may help us out, which which will give me time to do more of the administrative, what I should be doing. I'm always on the phone as well.
Calls too? Okay.
Yes, I feel called as well. I usually get in around 6:45. Phone lines open at 7:00 AM, and I'm there till 4:30. But I'm still taking calls as well. It is a busy department, and having an extra one, maybe a 10th person may help us tremendously. And maybe that can be something that can go in the budget maybe for fiscal year '23. I think with the pandemic, once that hit, and we were short-staffed because we had people leave, and we did get another person come in, but just to try to get the training for the person to get on the phone line, it does take a while. Because just trying to learn every department and whatever department, what their requirements are. So it does take a while for a person to get on the phone lines and start answering the calls.
Absolutely. I worked in the call center in the start of my career. So I understand level of training. My training was three months, level of training that's required. TJ, can American Rescue Plan Act funds be used for an additional staff for 311?
I would look at it. I know Roy's had a tough time maintaining adequate staffing levels. I have not been requested for an additional position, but I would gladly look at a new position and to say COVID-related and make it a rescue plan position for the foreseeable future and then fold it into the general fund after that.
Okay, that that'd be great if you could look into that. Thank you, Roy. Thank you, TJ.
Counselor Woodfield? Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Along the same lines as Counselor Woodfield, I'd like to thank you too for for having 311 be available. I mean, it makes a huge difference when someone can talk to a real person on the other end of the line. And I am just curious about the calls that you received during COVID. Can you categorize what what people were worried about or concerned about during during this time? Because they had to be different than your previous calls.
Yeah, well, it varies. Sometimes people are calling, trying to get the vaccination or try to get tested. When we first, when City Hall first closed, most people were just calling up, when is City Hall going to reopen? And once we did reopen on a limited basis, we filled a lot of those calls, people trying to get to the city clerk's office or pay their bill with the collector's office. So it did vary throughout the time, depending what was going on. So once the vaccination rolled out, we were getting a lot of calls in regards to that, where can they go get vaccinated? So it did different, you know, as I indicated, throughout the months, as time changed and everything, every, you know, every other week, it was something different with the calls. We got a lot of complaints in regards to people not wearing their their face masks, going to public places, not wearing their face mask. You know, we filled with those calls and we sent them over to the director departments, we sent them over to the health department so they could address those issues.
Thank you. Certainly available asset for the city, having it run so well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just rising to thank Roy personally for all of his assistance with with so many constituent issues these last several years. I mean, really, their ability to cross communicate with so many different departments and track everything through their system is invaluable. So I just wanted to personally thank Roy and his team and certainly agree if there's a way to make them even more efficient via an additional position, I would be supportive of that as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dabula?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise to agree with Counselor Woodfield that we should strongly look at the look at one more FTE for the 311. At the very least, a part-time position now for this budget. The ARP money can be used. That was fantastic. But let us keep in mind that even though we are not out of the COVID-19 pandemic quite yet, things are moving along quickly. We're looking pretty good. And as we start opening up, I'm sure that as we all get busy, the 311 would also get busy. And I'm sure they could use extra help. So TJ, if we can make that happen for this budget season, that will be absolutely a great, great asset to the city. Thank you.
Did you want to comment on that? Or were you okay? Okay.
We're definitely looking at it. I have no problem looking at it.
All right. Thank you, TJ. Counselor Hurst?
Yeah, no, I just want to add to the to the choir. Roy, I appreciate everything that you do. I've called 311 on a couple of occasions, and Roy has I've called, uh, 311 on a couple of occasions, and Roy has answered the phone. And I've always said to myself, they must be really busy, uh, if the director of 311 is answering phone calls. So I appreciate you, um, and I appreciate everything that you, that you do, and I love the fact that, uh, you're willing to get your hands dirty uh, and show your staff that you, you, you can do what it is that you asked them to do. So TJ, um, I know they're short-staffed, and so, um, if, if at all possible, I think it would be great to include a position in this year's budget to the extent we can. Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Councillor Hurst. Are there any other questions for, from the council on 311? None. Capital Asset Construction. Is there anyone on the call to speak to Capital Asset Construction?
Yeah, Peter Garvey.
Thank you, Peter.
Department of Capital Asset Construction. Um, we do, uh, anything over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the city construction-wise. So, uh, we're currently building the Brightwood Lincoln School, as well as the Devery Homer School, and associated parks and some other, uh, projects within the city. We have five full-time employees. And that takes up most of our, our, uh, budget. There's, uh, ancillary, you know, reoccurring fees that we need to pay, so it's copiers and stuff like that. So we're pretty level right now.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time? Councillor Allen?
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Pete, um, I noticed your comment here that, uh, project management functions continue to be in-source. So that means all the project management functions that you guys, uh, need in, in order to complete these projects, it's all full-time staff of your own?
Correct. We do most of the planning and, uh, construction management on the projects. That used to be outsourced many years ago to independent contractors. Now it's all in-sourced.
And do you prefer that? Is, how's it going with that?
Absolutely. We're able to control the budgets. We're able to control the schedules. We're accountable to each other. So it's very important that it's in, in-sourced as opposed to outsourced.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Are there any other questions, councillors, at this time? Councillor Walsh?
Uh, following up on, uh, similar questions, do you feel that you have enough staff? Have you put in for a position or your, because you do do a lot with the, uh, capital asset building?
We do do a lot, and as Roy stated before, we worked through the pandemic. There was five of us that came to work every day in order to bring these projects in on budget and time. Uh, Brightwood was a ninety-million-dollar project. Uh, it's going to be open in the fall this year. We're just putting the finishing touches on it, so I think we have the, I know we have the adequate staff. We have, uh, great people in our department. Everyone's qualified. Everyone's taking the, the opportunity to get the education that they need to further development.
Good to hear.
Thank you, Councillor Walsh. Councillor Whitfield?
Uh, Peter, again, I want to say thank you on your staff for you being essential workers and, um, you know, being there through COVID, you know? It was a tough time for all of us. Uh, my question is, why did your budget get reduced by eleven thousand dollars?
We had a transition. We had a senior project manager, uh, retire. We were able to hire within the city of Springfield, and we brought a, a younger gentleman up and, uh, that went to school for project management. So we were able to insert him into our department.
Okay, that's good. That was a nice savings. Um, my question, my other question is for TJ. Um, I was reading, and I think I got a letter from the union about, um, a bonus or additional funds being available for essential workers. Um, is that through the American Rescue Plan Act?
Yes, actually, it's, uh, part of the American Rescue Plan, and it's being actively discussed, uh, with the administration, uh, on, uh, what to do and how to do it.
Okay, but that's not funds you would add to the budget?
No, we will not add it to the general fund budget. It would be paid for by the ARPA plan.
By the ARPA plan? So that would be like an off-budget funding? Like, how does that work? Like, I'm really confused about the American Rescue Plan Act, so I'm glad we're having a meeting on it. Um, how, how is that money filled it to the different departments and things like that? And will the city council outside the finance, um, meeting be aware of it? Well, obviously we will because we have to approve it, but, um...
So we do not have all those details yet, uh, on how it'll functionally work. We're still, we just got the money wired to us last week. Uh, we need it accepted, and then we can develop a plan on how to implement it, spend, and that's what, uh, we're working on now. All we know right now is what you know, the same broad categories, uh, uh, infrastructure being more so water, sewer, broadband, uh, premium work for pay, uh, economic development, job creation is really all we know. Uh, then you throw in that housing and equity and all those things, uh, through the law, oh, we're trying to like filter through. What does that all mean? Because everyone has a different interpretation of COVID-related, uh, and economic development and job creation. So my intent is to get clarity and then essentially write a note to the federal government, but not literally, but to the file, explaining why this relates to COVID. So in five years from now, if we get audited, then I, I could say, well, that's what I was thinking, or if I'm not here, I could say, you know, here's what we were thinking at the time. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at. We're just trying to figure out how do we make it all work and then make it so we don't have them come back and ask us for twenty million back. But, uh, that's how we're, that's where we're heading with it.
And I remember getting a letter from the union about essential workers, and I just want to make sure that our essential workers on a city level, uh, school side, are taken care of. Um, you know, because their lives are at risk every day, while some of us had the luxury, including myself, to work from home. And so, um, I just want, uh, we'll, we'll talk about it more.
I appreciate, I appreciate it. We are definitely going to do something. It's just a matter of what it looks like.
Okay. Thank you, TJ.
I thank you, Councillor Whitfield. Councillor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, again, I, I, I agree with Councillor Whitfield. I do recall, uh, having a brief discussion of this, I believe it was with TJ and Melanie, uh, company meetings, I think it was a finance meeting as well, well back. Uh, although TJ, we don't know exactly how much we're getting. I know we talked about ninety-seven to like one...
Uh, ninety-three point eight was the number that the federal government settled on.
Ninety-three point eight, okay. And, uh, I know we're getting all the details. Um, again, I just renewed my call that the definition for essential working is as expansive as possible. Uh, in my opinion, anybody that went to work at city halls during the pandemic, at the library, the cops, the firefighters, uh, should be considered essential workers. Um, we had the luxury of working, uh, uh, and continue to have a functional government, uh, through Zoom. Uh, however, there's some people, as we all know, that couldn't do that. Uh, and definitely, definitely, the capital assessment should also be involved in that equation. Uh, and, uh, if I may suggest to the, uh, to Councillor Whitfield, uh, perhaps we should have a meeting specifically on this in the finance department as we learn more details to ensure that the definition of, um, uh, essential worker is as expansive as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let Councillor Davila know we are in the process of trying to schedule a meeting for Friday because the approval for the AARP, um, fund is scheduled for next Monday. So, um, we have a short window. I couldn't talk to you and Councillor Allen first, um, because the window is so short to get the meeting scheduled.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Uh, Councillor Letterman?
No, I'm fine, Mr. President. Sorry.
All right. No worries at all. Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to employee benefits. Employee benefits, who will be...
Oh, sorry. I was just pulling, I was just pulling up on my laptop. So, the benefits department is a relatively new department, uh, that has been created, uh, the last couple of years. It funds, uh, seven FTEs. Uh, we were actually increasing it, one FTE due to a number of audits that, uh, uh, found us needing to do a lot more reconciliation. So we're adding, uh, a benefits analyst to the budget for FY twenty-two, uh, to assist with all the work we need to do in that department.
All right. Thank you, TJ. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Any questions on employee benefits? All right, seeing none, we can, forces in labor relations.
Maybe Councillor Bill will be free from labor relations and human resources. Uh, we're responsible for, uh, the human resources function for the city. This includes, uh, recruitment, application management, onboarding, personal file maintenance, leave management. We handle the, uh, FMLA cases, ADA, FF-CRA, ADA, and the other laws that are affecting employees or, uh, or departments. We, uh, we do the employee assistance program, the workers' comp, the unemployment management for all the city and the school departments. We do the training for the city, uh, including workplace safety training, and we manage the CDL programs for our CDL drivers, uh, including their new clearinghouse. We do the labor relations for city government. Uh, there are twenty-four unions in the government. They range in size from two to two thousand five hundred members. Um, as of last June thirtieth, we had all twenty-four of the contracts, uh, under unions, I should say, under contract. Right now, we have fourteen unions that expired as of last, uh, June thirtieth. We have seven more expiring this month. We've been in active negotiations. I'll be seeing you shortly with, uh, at least one, uh, union ratification that we've received notice of. We have, uh, another TA that we reached that, uh, we're expecting to vote on shortly, and, uh, we'll probably have a third TA coming in, uh, AIA. So we're very active. We've had free bargaining sessions so far this week. We've got two more to go. Uh, labor relations is keeping us healthy. We have nine, uh, nine positions in the department. That's eight, um, full-time employees and two part-time employees. There's been no change. All of our positions are filled. Um, and I think that summarizes, uh, what we're doing in labor relations and HR.
Thank you, Bill. Um, I will have a question for you, but before that, I will pass it to Councillor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, in the budget, it says includes funding for an increase in employee physical costs compared to FY twenty-one. What are the physical costs?
Uh, that's, that's probably the fiscal, that's probably the testing that we do. It's probably the pre-employment testing, and, uh, there's just been an increase in cost in general with pre-employment testing. It's not a large cost, but it is, we, we've noticed, we see that it's tracking up. We did look for other vendors, but the costs were pretty close. We didn't see any reason to change our vendor, but there is a small increase in that.
And then there's the fifty thousand, um, oh, that's total. So personal services is the testing?
So personal services is just the employees, the OTPF. We have, uh, an upgrade for NeoGolf for onboarding our employees. An increase in physical costs. Uh, the number, the volume and the cost of our employee fiscals have gone up.
Oh, employee fiscals, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councillor Whitfield. Councillor Allen?
You're muted. Councillor Allen?
I'm sorry, Councillor Allen. Let me un, there you go.
Yeah, uh, thanks. Um, did you say that we have roughly twenty contracts that are, um, at the end of this month? It'll be about twenty contracts that are, need to be renegotiated?
Yeah, we're, uh, we have fourteen that went out last June, uh, last June thirtieth. But because of COVID, there's not been a lot of interest in coming to the bargaining table with us. Um, it's really been kind of slow getting to the table because, number one, we're not going to the physical table. We, you know, everyone had a pivot. We do a lot of our negotiations now through Zoom, uh, and through email, through phone calls. Um, particularly early on in, in COVID, people just knew it wasn't safe to come to the table and start bringing people, uh, close even with the masks and, and washing our hands and trying to keep six feet apart. It, it wasn't really working all that well. So, uh, we do have some that expire, but we're, like, as I said, we're, we're actively engaged with, uh, a whole bunch of our unions at this point, and we're doing pretty well with negotiations with getting full...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Councillor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Bill, Mr. Mahoney, quick question. That NeoGolf program, uh, is that a one-year, is that a subscription basis every year? Or is it a one-time cost upgrade?
So it's a subscription every year. This is how we actually do all of our recruiting right now. Um, last year, I mean, as of today, we had three hundred and three thousand hits on our job postings. We had a hundred and seventy-two postings this year, and we received about four thousand, six hundred applications for those postings. But there are about three hundred and three thousand hits. It's a fantastic system for us. We're, we're real happy with it. Uh, what we want to do is we want to add that onboarding piece though, so that all that paperwork, all that stuff can get out to our, our lead candidates. Um, and before the first thing, they're even here, they'll have all our policies that we'll sign off on that. There's a lot of, uh, the tax forms we'll be able to sign off on. Uh, you know, it's, it's going to be a great addition to what we're doing.
Now, Mahoney, is that, did I hear you say that's thirty thousand dollars for the NeoGolf?
Uh, it's going to be a total seventeen, seventeen for the addition.
And how much is thereafter? Is that seventeen or less?
It's going to be the same. It goes up about, um, five to ten percent a year, I think. That's typically the increase.
Okay, uh, okay. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Davila. Councillor Walsh?
Thank you, and, um, Bill, I thought of you because I was at a special Olympics event, and I know you are a wonderful volunteer for them and have helped them for a long time. But I, I don't know if you answered this already. What, what does it mean when you have an increase in employee physical costs? What does that mean?
The pre-employment physical exam. So...
Oh, okay.
So before we bring them onboard, everyone gets a physical, and then we, we chart that, and the costs just have gone up, and we just need a little more money to keep that program right.
Does the city still have a, uh, like a city doctor, or, or do you know, do people go to many different physicians?
Typically, some of the concentra for the pre-employment physicals, I believe that's, you know, we weren't using Mercy and they got all of that business.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I wasn't quite sure what that meant.
I think we better reword that one. I know what it meant.
Thank you, Councillor Walsh. Um, I do actually have a question, Bill, and I, and I recognize this might, um, in part be a conversation that also includes the mayor's office. But as it relates to salary ranges, I'm, I'm a big proponent of a salary range rather than just say, here's your number with no potential for growth. A salary range provides an opportunity to, of course, start with the salary, and then you can kind of progress within your own position. And in, in a sense, the raise is kind of built into the range itself. So I just want to know, I, I know there's some folks that, who work for the city that do have a range. There's others that do not. How, is there any consistency? Has there any been any discussions around the consistency around that piece? Um, and how we can be a little bit more progressive as it relates to salary ranges?
Most, most of the non-bargaining positions are, are within, or have a salary range. Uh, it's, it's very few of the non-bargaining that have just a fixed rate of pay. Um, like our seasonal employees, it's a fixed rate of pay. This is what we pay for this job, for everybody in that job. So if you're a head rep leader, you're going to make X dollars an hour. But if you come into, you know, a, a full-time position with the city, um, you know, and you're not bargaining, you're going to be, um, you know, a TPA three or a TPA ten. You can be an MM one, an MM six, you can be an EM one, EM five. So there's going to be different, uh, there's different grades, different ranges. Uh, but when we advertise, we usually advertise the beginning of the range.
Uh, and I, I just, you know, I, I just would echo and, and stress that I think it's important. I know for the city council office, for example, and, you know, Sue and Kelly, and then, of course, the vacancy, it, it's, I think it's important, uh, at some point to, to revisit, um, having ranges even with an office like that, right? To give folks the opportunities to grow within their positions, or if they're coming in with less experience or more experience, to become, to be compensated as such. Um, so I, you know, I, I'd like to just a deeper dive into that. That's another, uh, topic for another day, but, uh, we can proceed... That's another topic for another day, but we can proceed. If there's no other questions for human resource and labor relations, we can go to the law department at this time.
Thank you, councilors. Oh. Councilors, it's good to see you all. Haven't seen you in a while. It's good to see you. The law department recommended budget for next year is two point nine million. This is an increase of fourteen point six percent, which is essentially based on the two percent FY twenty, two percent twenty-one, but also four new F T Es consisting of one new attorney position and three new administrative positions. The new attorney is with regard to the body worn cameras. There's an administrative position also associated with that. There, and there is another administrative position that helps out on all of the paperwork related to economic development types of paperwork, and another paralegal position that's been assigned to the administrative division under deputy solicitor Brett. So that is a, an explanation of what we're looking for and why there is an increase, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Council Allen? Council Allen, I believe you're muted.
Oh, sorry, here we go. Unmute. Thanks for presenting your budget. It seemed to me that you were understaffed at times in the past, so I'm glad to see you're able to add some lawyers, which hopefully helps you out. I'm just wondering, you know, what the, we don't get the, at least in the book that I'm working off of, we don't get the full budget information. So I'm wondering, do you have, you know, when we need outside counsel, do you have a bucket, if you will, for consulting and hiring lawyers from outside? And I was wondering what the size of that number is.
Sure. So we have what's called a professional services account that we use to pay for consultants, expert witnesses, stenographers, but for the most part, outside counsel. And it's, we don't use a lot, but altogether, for all of those services, our annual budget is, I think, a hundred and three thousand dollars. And, but that basically covers it.
By hiring more lawyers, is that, obviously, you might need less outside counsel? Was that the part of the idea?
No. The new lawyer position is for body worn cameras that we added.
Oh, right.
Maybe here. What we're trying to do is get more staff. We have a number of vacancies that we're trying to fill, and thank you for allowing us to welcome back Attorney Tashina Davis. It's nice to have a homegrown attorney back in the fold. She, of course, had started as a law clerk, then as paralegal, worked her way up the ladder as an attorney, and now I'm really hoping that the experience that she gained as a department head supervising and managing is gonna help her as she goes forward to work continuously on the procurement, on the marijuana issues, on the public records issue, which has been a exploding area involving a lot of management. But also, you will be seeing her back at your meetings, and Tom Moore will be the backup. So we're, we're very grateful to have her, and we've got a few more in the fold who are some newer people coming up through the ranks, some just taking the bar, some just passing the bar, and some of the law clerks that we have promised will also be able to grow, as I said, homegrown product.
Great. That's great. Thank you. That's good about Tashina having a, being back on your staff.
Thank you, Council Allen. Council Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not necessarily for the law department, but just related to Council Allen's comment on the budget document. I've requested in the past, and we've received an Excel version of the line item budget. Is that available for this year?
Yes. We've set along the F T E counts. It is actually, sorry, Council Allen, it is in the document, as Lindsay's telling me right now, in the back, there's a line item detail of each department.
Yeah, on the F T E counts, but we've had, we've had more detail in the past.
Yeah, this, the information that we have is similar to their, since it took so long to get the information, we needed to get the budget to you. We didn't have the luxury of time to do a full-fledged four hundred page budget that we typically were doing probably three years ago. Three years, we give you an abbreviated budget document with the intent of giving you all the information you need to make an informed vote.
Council Letterman, the line item budget that we've supplied to you in the past two years, it's in the back of the budget document, starting on page forty-one.
Yep. Thanks, Lyndy. Thanks for pointing that out.
Got it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Council Letterman. Council Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you, Attorney Picula. So we have a two point nine, but I'm looking at page forty-four on the settlement claims for one ninety-five K. That seems awfully low to me.
Yes, what we do is, we use that for, if I would say, the run-of-the-mill types of cases that typically motor vehicle accidents, slip and falls, personal injuries, and smaller claims that are more run-of-the-mill that are covered. But for any significant claims, we have made it a practice to come before the council and discuss and seek an appropriation so that there's greater transparency and a process to make informed judgments.
And so, if you could refresh my memory, the appropriations things will be made out of the free cash or from where?
It depends. So depending on, you know, what the status is of the case, what the size of the case, what the status is of free cash, what the status of our reserves, those are financial decisions that, you know, we cooperate with O N B on.
All right, thank you, Attorney Picula. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good counselor. Are there any other questions from the council on this particular apartment budget? We can then go to the Office of Procurement.
Hi, everybody. I'm T O T, who is a deputy procurement officer, and I'm here with Lauren Stavro, the chief procurement officer, who's gonna give our presentation.
FY twenty-two budget is just a minor increase of thirteen thousand. We have four purchasing agents, one assistant, one deputy, and one C P O. The majority of our budget is for salaries and advertising. The remaining is just for everyday run of the office, copier fees, postage, things like that.
Right. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Or the Office of Procurement? Again, any question from the council? Council Whitfield?
Directly from the cabinet, but I'm gonna have to agree with Council Letterman on the budget side. We usually get more details when we can see the revenue. You can see the full picture. It's hard to make informed decisions and gauge where we're really at without that. So do you know when the full budget changes will be done, TJ? Or is this?
We're not planning on putting together the full document until after the city council vote. Having said that, we will provide any information that is necessary that the council wants. If you want a unit printout, email to you. If you want organ object detail, we can do that. It all depends on what we're looking for. You know, if you want grant funds, we can do that. I mean, it all, I mean, really, we're not over trying to hide anything. We're just trying to do it that we were shorthanded and we didn't have the luxury of time to get a budget for you guys to have sufficient time to deliberate before July first.
Yeah, it's hard to deliberate without the full picture, and I don't think that you guys were trying to hide anything.
No, 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 I didn't mean this.
With COVID and everything else that's going on, you guys have a lot on your plate. But it's just really hard to make informed decisions and really get the full picture without, like, for me, I like to see the revenue, the projected revenue that's coming in from each department. Did it decrease? Did it increase? Grants are great to know, like, what can be offset, what has been offset, not just positions, but even some other expenses that can be offset to the grant. So it's kind of hard to know the full picture without the full budget document. And so at minimum, if you can get us the revenue side.
The supplemental information that we have that can inform your vote and your deliberations.
Thank you, TJ.
Right. Thank you, Council Whitfield. Council Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Lauren.
Muted.
I didn't do that. It keeps me. I've unmuted myself.
Yeah, you're fine.
All right. Okay, on staffing, Lauren, it shows seven F T Es. Do you have any open positions?
We have one open position right now.
Okay, so one open there. And Chase Wan and Hope, are they in your staff or are they somewhere else?
They're.
No, they are under O N B.
They're on O N B. Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Allen, are there any other questions from the council at this time? Any other questions for the Office of Procurement? Council Whitfield?
Yeah, Lauren, I wanted to ask you the same question. Do you feel like you're adequately staffed presently to handle your work?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we can then move to information tech. Gee, Mr. Dodie, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Council President Williams. So our budget has increased a little bit. Our staff has been on hand pretty much every day since the pandemic started. We've had some substantial increases to the network and to the infrastructure that we had to do because of COVID and the increased load of people working from home. So much of our initial planning had to be accelerated, and we had to implement things a little quicker than we, than we liked. However, knock on wood, things are very well. We're very appreciative of everybody's help and understanding while we did all this upgrades. Few things we needed to do was to change out all our security hardware and all of our internet routing hardware so that we could increase the speed of the internet to accommodate Zoom meetings and people working from home. We've had a lot of changes to the telecommunications infrastructure because of people working from home. And one of the larger things, like I said, most of our staff has been in pretty much every day since COVID started. We all really need to be there to be able to hear what's going on. One of the larger items is, is that in order to help ourselves finance and ultimately the city council is we are leasing all of the PCs, of which there are about eight hundred. So what we're doing so that we don't cause speed bumps, so to speak, in the budgetary process, we are leasing the PCs now over a five-year contract. This is just gonna ensure that we keep our security tight. We change out the hardware as necessary, and we don't have a large ask every, you know, four or five years saying, hey, we need to replace this equipment. So the goal is, is to try to help everyone from the budgetary process and to ensure that our equipment stays up to date and secure.
All right, thank you. Andy, are there any questions from the council at this time? Council Walsh, you're muted.
Just thank Andy and the staff for being there, because I know whenever I've had a question, they've been there to help me out. But I don't know how many times you've rescued my password for me. I certainly appreciate all your help. But my question's about security, and you know, we read so much about people being hacked and cyberware. And what, have you had increased costs to protect city information? Or how do you see that as a risk?
Well, it, you know, as, security obviously is very, very important to us. Probably our number one priority. And on top of that, between COVID and the increased hacks, you know, we've made changes to our infrastructure anyway. So the goal is, is to try to stay as current as possible with the technology. It's an ever-evolving thing. You know, if we tighten up the security too much, people can't do their work. If we're too lax, then there's a potential that we can get hacked. So it's a tight walk. It's a very, very, very narrow path that we take each day relative to that. Finance has been very helpful, you know, with regards to saying, listen, you know, now's the time if we need to increase our bandwidth, which we did. We needed to change the hard, the aging hardware that just, quite frankly, couldn't handle the, couldn't handle the amount of work that we're asking it to do on a day-to-day. So we're fortunate at this time, yes, we are actively monitoring it. We're going to be much more diligent on changing out our infrastructure, just to make sure it stays current, because current is what's gonna ultimately help us thwart these attacks.
And are there increased costs associated with that, around that security?
Yes, so because we had to increase, yeah, because we had to buy new hardware. Yes, the new hardware is much more powerful, and therefore, the support for that hardware costs a little bit more each year than the hardware before.
Well, and I know that you guys always try to get the best deal for the city, but you're so specialized, you have a hard time recruiting employees.
All right, this is Bob Maggi. We're having a huge time trying to get employees.
Okay.
Yeah, it's almost impossible. There's about a two percent attrition rate in I T right now, and most of the people, especially programmers, ninety percent of them or ninety-five percent of them throughout the industry, work from home, and that's not really something that we're set up with for the city. I mean, most places, you're lucky, we have to hire people from Springfield. You're lucky to get a programmer in Massachusetts or on the East Coast right now. Most companies hire from the West Coast, and people work remotely every single day. And for us, that's almost an impossibility under the restrictions that we have, and actually our salary restrictions, too. I mean, we're probably ten to fifteen percent under industry standards with the salary. And, but we slowly moved up, and, but hiring people, we've had three positions open for four years. We have had dozens, we've got out dozens of times to, through Bill's program, and we're just not getting anybody to even apply.
Hopefully, that can change. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Walsh. Councilor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Andy and Bob. I'd saw a few questions. First of all, again, I also join the choir in thanking you for excellent job during COVID and keeping everything safe. With regards to the lease agreement, do you know the actual cost of that? And are we, are we looking at a particular department or?
No, it's a city, that's citywide. So what we're doing is a phased rollout, department by department. This ensures that, you know, we keep everything current on a department. Each department has different needs than other departments relative to software and so on. So what we try to do is affect the department at a time and do it in a controlled release. I don't have the exact figure with the lease item in front of me, but it is over a five-year agreement. And it is about eight hundred PCs. So we do have quite a few people that will be rolling. And it is about eight hundred PCs. So we do have quite a few people that will be rolling out over the coming months.
Now, Andy, is, so this is similar to what the school department does?
That's exactly what the school department does. We're in the process now of rolling out about eight hundred new PCs. By the end of June, every employee in the city of Springfield should have a new desktop or laptop in front of them.
Uh, I was just wondering, are we using the same company that the school department is? Hopefully that's gonna give us a better price point.
Uh, we actually went out and we're going through Wally Computer, and so did the school department, and we did get a very, very good price point on Dell machines, both, uh, desktops and laptops because of the quantity that we buy from them.
So we're gonna be using the same one the school department?
Yes, we are.
Excellent, excellent. And that's gonna be some good cost-saving measures.
Yeah, it was. Nobody could even match close to what they came through at.
Beautiful, beautiful. Good to hear. Now, I just have a quick question. Um, I know you say, Bob, that we are ten to fifteen percent understand our, with salaries. Uh, speaking of salaries, is that forty-six thousand the increase in salaries for fourteen FTEs?
Yes.
That's, okay. And so you're saying that we still, that's under the stand, the, under the, uh, industry standard?
Yes, we're definitely under the industry standard.
Okay. Uh, and I know I may be looking, asking you guys to look through a crystal ball, but, um, I know we were able to averting attack if I'm not mistaken, the school department's side. We're gonna go COVID. Can you briefly?
We had, we got attacked, but we were able to minimize any damage and impact.
That was excellent job. Do you guys feel that you have enough resources right now to avoid any potential attack?
I would say yes. I mean, TJ and the finance department have been wonderful throughout COVID. Uh, they got us new equipment, top of the, uh, state-of-the-art equipment to thwart these attacks, and we actually did stop the same attack that the school department, uh, received, and they never got through our network. So I know we got top-of-the-line equipment. Uh, Andy and the staff really took a lot of time to pick out exactly the equipment we had. Uh, it was a little bit of a sticker shock when we went to TJ, but, you know, to spend two hundred thousand dollars to save two million, I mean, I think anybody would do that.
Not only that, but also the sensitive data in there too.
It's very sensitive data. Correct. Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Allen?
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Um, yeah, my one question is, how many open racks? It sounded like you might have three open racks there or positions you haven't been able to fill.
That's correct.
Total of three, Andy?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any other questions from the council at this time for I T? All right, seeing none, we can proceed with the Board of Assessors. Mr. Allen, I'll pass it to you.
Uh, good evening, Counselors. This is actually, uh, Patrick Greenhall, I'm the new Chair of the Board of Assessors. Uh, um, so, you know, Richie retired. Uh, he retired.
Saying that, Patrick, I apologize.
No, it's okay. Yes. So this is essentially, um, a similar budget to last year for the Board of Assessors. Uh, it is an increase for the two, two percent from fiscal, uh, for fiscal twenty-one and a two percent increase for fiscal twenty-two. Uh, as you're aware, our big responsibility is determining the full and fair cash value for all taxable parcels in the city of Springfield. So most of our budget is devoted to office salaries. And another large portion is for professional services to assist us in developing those values, but then also defending those values. So I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, if you have any.
All right. Are there any questions for the Board of Assessors at this time? And, uh, Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Patrick, are you, um, filling the open position, uh, for another third assessor?
So that's vacant, uh, for now. Um, at this point, I think we are going to move forward with a two-person board. Uh, we certainly have the full support of the administration on that. So beyond that, I don't know, uh, the answer to that.
Mr. President, uh, I can ask a question. So we're having active conversations with the mayor, uh, about, uh, how to go about filling the specialized position of the third seat of the Board of Assessors. Uh, you may recall, the last time it was vacant, it took a while, but we were, uh, fortunate enough to get Matt Fontaine, who was on the call now, um, to really come in and do a lot of our commercial work. Uh, so we're really trying to study what the need is of the, uh, board and to, uh, be very strategic and thoughtful who to put on that floor.
Okay, yeah, I just, and you pointed out the reason for the question. The last time we had a vacancy, it was vacant for quite some time. And I suppose it's possible that Patrick and Matthew May from time to time disagree. And if that happens, then, uh, I guess we don't really have that option for the time being. You guys have to agree and sort it out until you, until you do.
So I will say we work very well together.
That's good.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Counselor Allen?
Uh, my one question is, in addition to the open assessor, uh, position, uh, do you have any other open reps?
We do. Uh, we have three other open positions at the moment. Uh, two of them have been posted. We're about to interview for those two positions, and we will be posting a third position relatively soon, probably, uh, in, in the middle of July. Uh, we have a lot of work to do for the end of June for the first quarter billing. So we're gonna get through that and then likely try to post, uh, uh, one more position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any other questions for Board of Assessors? Seeing none, we can proceed to the Controller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Patrick Burns, the City Controller. Just want to present tonight the Controller's Budget, the general fund side. Um, Controller's Office has eight positions that are funded, and I'm happy to say eight positions that are filled. Uh, the increase in personal services is attributable to the two percent. And the additional two percent for the two fiscal years for the non-bargaining employees. And the other than personal services budget is pretty standard. It's our copier, some money for seminars and travel. And it's also our office supplies budget, which includes monies for the ten ninety-nine forms and the mailing that goes along with that.
Great. Thank you, Pat. Are there any questions for the Controller at this time? Any other? Seeing none, we can proceed to the Treasurer and Collector.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Chris Kaputo, City Treasurer Collector. I will start first with the Treasurer's Budget. Um, the increase in the personal services line item is due to the colas that were awarded. Um, the slight decrease in the OTPS line item is due to the fact that I will not be attending as many conferences as my predecessor. Um, my predecessor was president of the statewide association, so we had to attend every conference. Some of the conferences are repetitive and just happen in different regions of the state. Therefore, I will not be going to this next. Um, next up, uh, there's also nine FTEs in the Treasurer's Office. Um, I'm currently interviewing for an analyst. I have, uh, one vacant senior analyst position that I'm in the process of getting ready to post, and I have two retirements pending June thirty. For the Collector's Budget, um, the increase there on the salary, um, line item is the two percent cola as well as a, um, slight upgrade, um, for employees. Um, the Collector's Department never closed during the pandemic. We were open, um, the entire time. Uh, we actually also, with the help of facilities, finance, and several other city departments, we devised a way to take payments outs, uh, with the customers outside and my people inside during our busiest time of the year to ensure that City Hall did not become a hotspot for COVID. Currently there, I, I have seven FTEs budgeted for. I have one position that is vacant and posted.
Right. Thank you, Chris, for that. And I, I just want to also mention, I, I really just want to commend, uh, you and also the Clerk's Office. I know there was a lot in terms of, you know, all the bills residents have to pay. And in the midst of COVID, there was a lot of uncertainty around how that operation was going to happen. So just appreciate your efforts and, and those involved and, and making sure that they had the access they needed, even within, uh, the pandemic. So thank you for that. Are there any questions for Chris at this time?
Yeah, just one question, if I could, just, uh, so your open positions, Chris, uh, what's your, what, what's your total?
Total, right now, I have three open positions. One should be filled very shortly. Uh, one is posted, um, and people are applying for it. I checked this morning. I have more than enough applicants, and I have one that I'm getting ready to post, uh, shortly, hopefully before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Two pending. At June thirtieth, I have two retirements.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fenton?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Chris, um, what's the current status of the tax title program? I know that we put a pause on that due to the pandemic, and how does that impact, whatever the current status is, how does that impact your expenses?
So right now with the tax title program, um, we are slowly ramping it back up. Um, we are behind in our takings. Um, the next year for a taking will be fiscal nineteen. We have to do that in this fiscal coming, otherwise any properties that were sold, we lose our rights to our lien. Uh, it's three years for us to put our lien on regardless if it sells or not. If it, if we did intend to do it and the property did sell when we did it two, three years down the road, we then become alienated and we would lose our ability to collect on that. Um, this year, I don't see any, I don't anticipate any increase in costs. The tax title program, as we will be slowly ramping it up, I expect fiscal twenty-three to be the catch-up year where we will probably have to do two tax takings at once.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Counselor Davila?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good to see you, Chris. Uh, I was just wondering, um, do you say, you say you have one vacant position of the collectors? Did you say you have, you're gonna fill that soon?
One, uh, the, the position that will be filled soon is in the Treasurer's Department. Collectors is posted. Um, I believe it closes Thursday. And I will move very quickly to hire that position.
And you expect that shouldn't be a problem?
No, I looked this morning. I'm well over eighty applicants.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chris.
Hey, thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions at this time? We can proceed. The last, uh, department this evening, the Internal Audit.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Young No, Director of Internal Audit. Uh, my FY twenty-two budget, uh, is consistent with previous years. Um, the slight increase relates to the salary cola adjustment. It funds three full-time employees. My OTPS is comprised mostly of external, um, audit services for the city's financial statement audit. Currently, I have one vacancy, which I expect to fill, uh, shortly. I have a, a posting currently. And with that, I'd be, uh, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. No. Are there any questions, uh, for, uh, the audit at this time? Seeing none.
Sorry. Hello, um, hi, Young. Thank you for your report out. Um, do you think you're adequately staffed to handle, um, the audit request of tourist name?
Oh, currently, I'm Dallas staff, so, um, I, I am shorthanded. But once, uh, um, I fill the, um, the vacancy. Uh, I expect to be adequately staffed, um, just so that, uh, the councilers know, we do handle two major, um, divisions of the city as well as the school department.
Okay. As long as you feel comfortable.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Woodfield. Are there any other questions or comments from the council at this time? Right. Seeing none, that will conclude our budget hearing session for this evening. Uh, we are scheduled to appear at the same time tomorrow for the remaining thirteen departments, with the exception of the school department, which had to be scheduled as their own sole meeting due to graduation schedules. So that meeting will be forthcoming, um, as already been scheduled, uh, for, I believe, next week. Uh, with that being said, I want to thank all of the department heads for joining us this evening, as well as, uh, city staff. Uh, and we'll adjourn at this time.